And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance, in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law, notice of this public meeting has been published in the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger Newspapers, and posted on the Middlesex County website, as well as on the front door of the bulletin board of the Middlesex County Administration Building, at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting, which shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting. Participants on this call will have the ability to speak during the public portions of this meeting. Members of the public must press star nine to virtually raise their hand to speak. When your hand is raised, you will be placed in the queue or virtual line to speak during the public portion. The moderator will ask participants with raised hands to unmute themselves. When this happens, the phone operator will instruct the participant to press star six to unmute themselves. You will know when you have been unmuted and it is time to speak when you hear the operator say you are unmuted. When a participant has either completed their comments, or are told their allocated five minutes are up, they will be placed unmute by the moderator.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
County Commissioner Armwood?
Here.
County Commissioner Ascona Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Here.
County Commissioner Koppel? County Commissioner Nara?
Here.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Here.
County Commissioner Director Rios? And County Commissioner Koppel? Okay.
Uh, recognition?
Yes, first is recognizing the Black Union Leaders in Middlesex County for Black History Month, and next is recognizing Jane Brady for her service to McFoods.
Can I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
County Commissioner Ascona Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Comis- Kenny Deputy Director, um, County Commissioner Deputy Director Armwood?
Yes, uh, that's okay. Uh, Madam Clerk, I understand that some of the, uh, people who were being recognized for Black History Month might be on the call. Would you mind just reading the names, just in case they are listening into our meeting?
Um, yes, sure. Okay, there is Darlene Smith, Joan Wright, Diane Garstead, Scotty Jenkins, Diane Crawford, LaShawn Arrington, Roberto Sayers, and Cheryl Willis.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Also Barbara James.
Okay, thank you, and, and thank those leaders. Minutes for approval?
Yes, um, Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting, February fourth, twenty twenty-one, at seven o'clock P M.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please?
County Commissioner Ascona Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara? County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner, yep, County Commissioner Deputy Director Armwood?
Yes, report to the commissioners. I will start from the Department of Business Innovations, Education, and Opportunity. The Department of Business Innovation, Education, and Opportunity continues to expand its virtual programming in the arts, celebrating diversity, culture, and history of Middlesex County. The department makes available a number of online resources and tools for education, training, and career development to our constituents. From the Arts Institute, the Arts Institute is continuing to provide an inspirational series of videos and web content to honor Black History Month throughout the month of February. Please visit our website to access, for access to this great programming at www dot middlesexcounty nj dot gov slash Black History Month. I am pleased to inform you that this virtual art and storytime programming in honor of Black History Month has been so well received by our constituents, and has attracted such broader global audiences, that as a result, the Arts Institute, in collaboration with the Civic League of Greater New Brunswick, has planned to continue this virtual programming series throughout the year. Just as a side note, I will be reading on Wednesday at four o'clock. Next month, the virtual art and storytime program will be commemorating and encouraging the study, observance, and celebration of the vital role of women in American history during the month of March in honor of Women's History Month. From the Office of Cooperative Extension Services, I am pleased to share the, that the Office of Cooperated, Cooperative Extension Services is offering virtual training on pesticide treatment and online technical assistance to the local farming community. This office so far has successfully engaged over three thousand participants. The Are You Ready to Garden series will be starting again on Thursday, March eleventh, at six thirty. Series topics include planting a vegetable garden, starting seeds on a budget, and discovering new varieties. Please visit our website for a link to any previously recorded series, or to register for the Thursday, March eleventh, spring kickoff session. The Rose for the Hungry Garden plans to quadruple its production and increase donations to MC Foods in two thousand twenty-one. The garden produced over thirteen thousand pounds of produce for the needy in two thousand twenty. From the Office of Career Opportunity, I wish to congratulate Diane Severs, Chief Operations Officer, and Deputy Director, Middlesex County Workforce Development Board, and Office of Career Opportunity, who will be chairing a statewide committee with the Garden State Employment Association on the development of best practices for the expansion of workforce development and job placement assistance to meet the new demands of the job market. A testament to her expertise and a clear reflection of the excellence to the office. Congratulations to Diane for this distinction, and Kevin for his leadership and his team's outstanding performance and statewide recognition. That concludes my report for this evening. County Commissioner Clarabelle Ascona Barber. County Commissioner Ascona Barber? You might possibly be on mute.
Thank you Deputy Director.
Okay.
McFoods has a Stop the Truck Food Drive Event on Saturday, February twentieth, from ten A M. to two P M. at the Stop the Shop of Waking in East Brunswick. Residents are encouraged to stop by and drop off food donations to help keep the food bank shelves stacked as we continue to serve those in need. For more information about this event, please visit the Middlesex County webpage. Tax season approaching very fast. Preparation services are available to taxpayers with low and moderate incomes. With especial attention to those age sixty and older. Services are available in person and virtual. Most are by appointment only, so please go ahead. Due to the, due to the pandemic, many of the previous sites are no longer offering these services. Please call the Office of Aging and Disabled Services, or visit the county webpage for helpful information. Remember, April fifteenth is the deadline to submit new taxes. And that concludes my report Deputy Director Armwood.
Thank you County Commissioner Ascona Barber. County Commissioner Charles Kenny?
Good evening Deputy Director, and thank you very much. Uh, all I have for tonight is I just want to once again thank our public works, our parks, and all of the other employees and departments that are involved in getting our roads cleared during, uh, storms like we had today. Once again, they did an outstanding job, and I thank them very much for their dedication as always. And I believe that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you County Commissioner Kenny, and ditto to what you said about our employees. Uh, County Commissioner Leslie Koppel, has, has she joined us? No? Okay. County Commissioner Nara?
Thank you Deputy Director, and may I also echo the statements made by Commissioner Kenny about, uh, all our employees who've worked hard through this storm and the last storm, and unfortunately may have to work through the next week if there's a storm. So, the report from Department of Public Safety and Health, from our Divisions of Environmental Health and Solid Waste. Despite the demands being placed on our staff by the county's COVID nineteen response, the solid waste enforcement program has continued to monitor material deposited at solid waste facilities located in Middlesex County in order to ensure that mandated recyclables are not ending up in the regular waste stream. We are pleased to report tonight that a recent round of inspections conducted at the Middlesex County landfill and at several of the private transfer stations did not disclose any excessive recycling content in the waste loads being disposed of at these facilities. As per our protocol with NJDEP, if a hauler is found to be in noncompliance with the separation requirements, they will be issued a notice of violation directing them to take those steps necessary to ensure that their customers are properly separating recyclables. In addition, the customer's location, where the waste load originated, will be inspected for compliance with the Middlesex County recycling generator requirements. In the coming months, additional rounds of inspections are planned for the other transfer stations located in the county, as well as at the Middlesex County landfill. At present, it appears that Middlesex County businesses are complying with the county recycle and requirements, and we are greatly appreciative of, of that considering the pressures, uh, everyone is under during the pandemic. From the Solid Waste Management and Recycling Division. Today is recognized as National Battery Day. On this day, I want to remind our residents and businesses to safely recycle their rechargeable, rechargeable batteries. Rechargeable batteries can be found in cell phones, power tools, vape pens, and many other products. People, property, and the environment are put at risk when rechargeable batteries are mismanaged. Buyers have destroyed garbage trucks and recycling facilities due to rechargeable batteries being thrown in the garbage or curbside recycling bins. Remember to bring your rechargeable batteries to our household hazardous waste drop-off days, or recycle them at one of calltorecycle dot org's many Dropbox locations in Middlesex County. For additional information regarding rechargeable batteries or any other, um, environmental issues, please kindly visit the county's website or call our division directly. And finally, uh, I just want to remind everyone that the county, um, continues to maintain its robust, uh, uh, programs and protocols for, uh, the COVID nineteen pandemic. And if anyone needs any information for the scheduling of vaccines, or testing, case numbers, health information, helpful resources, or more, please visit the county's website at www dot middlesexcounty nj dot gov backslash COVID nineteen. And for people who cannot register online, or who have more detailed questions, please feel free to call our county call center at seven three two seven four five thirty-one hundred. Do not forget that the, uh, state of New Jersey has a statewide vaccine scheduling system, New Jersey Vaccine Scheduling System, NJVSS. The state's toll-free vaccination hotline is one eight five 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 six eight zero five four five, or you can find information at the state's website, covidnineteen dot nj dot gov backslash vaccine help. And all this information is once again available on the county's website. That's my report for tonight Deputy Director, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Nara. Tamara?
Thank you Deputy Director. I would like to take this time to thank all our county employees for their hard work and determination to keep our county running smoothly during today's snowstorm. Our crews are working continuously to keep our roads clear, and I'm proud of their fine performance. As always, our first pri- priority is ensure that the roads are clear for emergency vehicles. Once that is complete, we will start to clean our parks. I am asking everyone to be, please be patient. Not every park will open immediately. We will work as quickly and as safely as we can to get them open. In the meantime, please observe and obey posted signs, safety cones, tapes, and barrels. Driving over unplowed snow on roads and parking lots only makes our job more difficult, and it will take longer to safely open things up. We appreciate your patience. Due, due to ongoing COVID nineteen concerns and existing exec- executive order in place by Governor Murphy, opening day for our picnic reservations for twenty twenty-one is now tentatively scheduled for Thursday, April first, twenty twenty-one. Information regarding our new electronic reservation process will be on our website by mid-March. Please, please stay, uh, please check our website for upcoming announcements regarding our Middlesex County softball leagues, volunteer events, concerts, and other programming. And I'd also like to take this time to, uh, wish Jane Brady, uh, well in retiring from, uh, feeding Middlesex, um, while she served as a freeholder. She's the one who started the McFoods organization. You know, first they started in a small building and, uh, across from Camp Kitty Keep Well, moved to another warehouse on Jersey Avenue, and finally it moved to a warehouse, a nice warehouse on Kennedy Boulevard in East Brunswick. Um, you know, Jane, I remember when Jane, uh, started the process of talking about McFoods, a place to centralize, um, um, distribution and collecting of food for the needy. Uh, as of today, they service over a hundred and forty food pantries throughout our county. I know Jane will, um, hopefully, um, have a happy retirement. Um, she's done a great service to our county and to the people who live here. Um, and I also heard that the person taking her position would be Kevin Hoagland. I like to wish him luck, he's got some big shoes to fill. Thank you, and that, uh, ends my report.
Thank you Commissioner Tamara, and I understand that Commissioner Koppel has joined us.
Yes, I, I am, thank you very much Deputy Director. My apologies, I was able to listen but not get on, and I'm here now. Very excited to be here. I, I have a twenty twenty-one budget update. The Board of County Commissioners will be introducing the twenty twenty-one county budget on March fourth. The plan is to hold the public hearing and adoption on March eighteenth. The focus of the twenty twenty-one budget is to continue the short and long-term sound fiscal policies we have established over the past ten years. We will continue to integrate technology onto our operations to increase productivity, efficiency, savings, and to control salaries costs, which ultimately reduce the burden on our taxpayers. Other goals of the twenty twenty budget are controlling, reducing expenditures whenever possible without sacrificing the quantity and quality of services provided, continuing to decrease overall debt and annual debt service, continuing to increase the county's retained surplus fund, continuing to grow the pay-as-you-go capital improvement fund, and fund a fifty million dollar capital improvement program to maintain and elevate the county's infrastructure system. The plan is to meet all these fiscal goals while reducing or holding flat the county's overall tax rate. Furthermore, meeting these goals will ensure that the county retain our triple A bond rating for an unprecedented twenty-first consecutive year. The Commissioner Board is committed to adopt a budget that guarantees that this county continues to perform at a high fiscal level in order to maximize savings, while at the same time expanding and maintaining the excellent level of services its taxpayers deserve. That, that Deputy Commissioner, um, concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Koppel. Okay, Mr. Kelso, are there any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Are there any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
And are there any resolutions to be voided?
There are none.
Before we go into the public portion, I would like to read this statement. I would like to thank all those joining us on the call for tonight's meeting. Thank you for your attendance. Before we begin the first public portion, I would like to state that we will utilize advanced capabilities and technology to conduct this meeting. In order to keep decorum of this meeting and allow those wishing to speak to do so uninterrupted, the following instructions, which the clerk of the board recited earlier, apply for this meeting. Participants on this call will have the ability to speak during the public portions of this meeting. Before participants can unmute themselves, they must press star nine to virtually raise their hand. When your hand is raised, you will be placed in the queue or virtual line to speak during the public portion. The moderator will ask participants with raised hands to be un, to be unmuted. When this happens, the phone operator will instruct the participant to press star six to unmute themselves. You will know when you have been unmuted and it is time to speak when you hear the operator say you are unmuted. When a participant has either completed their comments within the five-minute time limitation, or are told that their allocated five minutes are up, they will be placed on mute by the moderator. To recap these updates, to recap these update instructions, you must press star nine to raise your hand, then press star six when the operator tells you to do so in order to speak during any of the public portions. Now the moderator will open up the floor for public comments or questions on items listed on the agenda only. There will be a portion of the meeting later on where you're free to ask any questions. This portion of the public discussion is just for items listed on the agenda. Operator, is there anyone in the queue wishing to speak?
Deputy Director, there are, I'll unmute the first participant now.
Could you please state your name and address, please?
Um, there's a YouTube channel, uh, broadcasting worldwide. Am I recognized?
Is this Mr. Macropolis?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, yes, you're recognized, please, you have five minutes as a reminder, sir. On agenda items only.
Um, Deputy Director, I know that we can only talk about agenda items, um, but since they're in the recognitions that we're recognizing, um, the Black Union Leaders in Middlesex County, would it also be appropriate if, uh, I'm able to say all the, uh, Black heroes that, that influenced my life Deputy Director, uh, Armwood?
That wouldn't be appropriate at this time, though, sir. You're free to recognize all of them, uh, during the public portion towards the end of the agenda.
Okay, no problem, um, thank you for clearing that, I'm, I'm just gonna, um, let me read some of the agendas real fast.
Okay.
I know there was one for the ballistic vests with, uh, the sheriff, I'm, I'm just trying to find it, it's a lot right now.
Take your time, sir.
Um, I hope I didn't pass it. Okay, uh, Office of the Sheriff, Mildred Scott, um, I like Mildred Scott, I'm a big fan, um, I didn't like the twenty nineteen campaign that they ran against her, but I'll speak for the agenda. They authorized the purchase of ballistic vests as required by the Middlesex County Department of Public Safety and Health, the county sheriff, in a total amount of forty-seven thousand. Um, the only problem I have with this, i- it doesn't let us know, um, forty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars, uh, it doesn't tell us how many ballistic vests that we're acquiring.
Mr. Macropolis, would you please, uh, tell me which item number that is, please?
I'm sorry, um, twenty-one, two-nine-four-R? It, it's gonna be under the Office of the Sheriff?
Yes, sir, I see it.
Because I want to take this number, forty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars, and I want to divide it by the number of, uh, ballistic vests that you guys are gonna buy, so I can see how much each vest is gonna cost us, but I can't even make that calculation, um, Deputy Director Armwood, because it doesn't even state, uh, state here how many, um, ballistic vests that we're gonna purchase.
Let me ask if maybe we can get an answer for you. Mr. Krizel, would you happen to know how many vests we're getting? Or maybe Mr. Puriti?
I do not have that number at this time, but I, I can provide it.
Okay, Mr. Macropolis, Mr. Puriti will provide you with the number of vests.
La- last time, um, the freeholders told me that they were gonna email me something a- and provide me something, I never received, uh, I never received that email. Um, I, I didn't have time to read all, all the other agendas, because I came on late, but it seems to me, in a lot of, um, cities, boroughs, townships across Middlesex County, when it comes time for the agenda items, especially in, at the New Jersey, they never, they'll always put down how much they're gonna pay, they never want to let us know how many pieces of equipment, and Deputy Director Armwood, I find that very suspicious.
Yes, ma'am? Mr. Macropolis, I'm sorry, this is Commissioner Nara. So, um, this is the amount, okay, it's, I apologize, it's, uh, fifty-five vortex, and I'm not gonna get into the details of it, it's, uh, fifty-five of one type of vest at a price of seven hundred and fifteen dollars each. Um, another fifty-five of a different kind of vest at ninety-three dollars and fifty cents each, and another fifty-five of a third type of vest at sixty-two dollars and seventy cents each. So the total amount of those three, three types is forty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars.
God bless you, but it's just, when, I would really like for the townships, especially the county freeholders, to list that on, on the agenda, um, so this way, people in the public, we can make our calculations, um.
And, uh.
Okay, haven't, uh, I'll see you in public comments.
All right, thank you, Mr. Macropolis. Operator, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Uh, yes Deputy Director, I'll allow the next participant.
Okay, thank you. Could you please state your name and address, please?
Yes, I'm Sir Deputy Commissioner Charlie Cradaville, uh, from the great city of New Brunswick, editor of New Brunswick Today. I wanted to ask first about number two-six-one, is that Sunoco Pipeline and the Meadows. Can you tell me, uh, what, what this pipeline is and why, uh, the, the board is, is, uh, poised to support it?
Mr. Paul Newman?
Yeah, I would ask Rick, uh, Holier, if you could provide some details surrounding the work that's being done down there?
Yes, thank you Deputy Director. We were, the county was approached by Sunoco Pipeline to, um, to relocate a portion of an existing petroleum line for about five hundred feet along the property edge with the Meadows at Middlesex Golf Course. This was in response to a, an expansion of a, uh, switching station by P S E and G, and the, uh, the resulting safety issues of placing, um, high voltage electricity on top of a petroleum line. So, they approached the county for an easement to run about five hundred feet along the property line. That easement was subject to a Green Acres diversion process. So, the easement has been approved by Green Acres, subsequently approved by the, uh, New Jersey State House Commission, and this is the actual conveyance of the rights. In return for the conveyance of the easement, the county has received three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a future park land acquisition, and, uh, two hundred and fifteen trees that will be planted at other park and open space sites. and, uh, two hundred and fifteen trees that will be planted at other park and open space sites.
Okay, thank you. I am concerned about the county doing business with, uh, um, you know, oil companies and, and, uh, allowing pipelines to be, uh, routed through areas like this. Are you, uh, this is county land that, that, uh, they're gonna be using?
Uh, Deputy, this, this is an existing pipeline that is being realigned for the purpose of the PSENG Palace Station. So it's not a new one.
I got that.
Okay. And number two is, it runs along the property that, uh, again, with the golf course, that has no impact or bearing on play.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Okay. Well, we, we wouldn't want to impact the play. Uh, I'm gonna move on to two-eighty-four. Uh, the GD Correctional Services getting five point eight million dollars for the food in the, in the, uh, uh, correction center. Is this a new company? Has this company been, uh, providing these services before? And, and, um, you know, uh, is there another way to do this without, uh, uh, spending so much on an outside company?
Commissioner, Commissioner, this is, uh, Warden Cranston.
Thank you.
Charlie, to answer your question, it was an existing contract for the food services. The additional money was to put in civilian workers in place of inmates, because, um, we had, uh, COVID positive tests at certain times, and we wanted to change the dynamic and put civilian workers in, so that was the additional cost. But the, uh, existing contract was for, for the, uh, existing food services.
Okay, and the duration of the contract?
Uh, I believe it's a three-year contract with two one-year extensions that are possible.
Okay, well, I think, uh, definitely preferable to, you know, hire, hire people and, and do it, do it ourselves if possible, rather than contracting out. But I'll move on to the final one. I want to ask about two-ninety-three. Uh, is, uh, uh, authorizing these, uh, MOUs with various law enforcement agencies for the use of specialized law enforcement equipment that the prosecutor's office has. Can you tell me what kind of equipment? Is it, you know, surveillance, equipment, weapons, something else? And what law enforcement agencies are you, you know, executing these memorandums with?
Deputy Director, this is Joe Krizel. I can answer that question?
Thank you.
Um, that, that's an MOU that we have with various pieces of equipment. There are not any firearms equipment or the like. There are such items as, if you notice the, at various events, you'll see a, an item like the sky tower. It is a piece of equipment that, that can, uh, extend up in the sky and, or up in the air, I should say. And you're able to view events, uh, from that, whether it's with an officer themselves or whether it's through a camera system. Um, it's for security purposes. Though, that type of equipment, it could be light towers, it could be various other items, but it is not, uh, any type of firearms or any type of, uh, explosive devices or the like.
Okay, and can you get me the list of the, the departments that, that, uh, you have these agreements with?
The agreements are with any of the municipal police departments throughout the county, uh, to sign the MOU. Yes. Whether they choose to, whether they choose to use it or not is, is their discretion.
Gotcha. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on agenda items only right now? Operator, is there anyone else in the queue?
No, Deputy Director, at this time there is not.
Okay, can I have a motion to close the public portion?
Who to close the public portion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Mr. Kelsall, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately?
I believe we have, uh, one, uh, by, uh, Commissioner Nara, uh, resolution twenty-one dash two-four-three. And I don't believe there are any others unless someone, uh, has something else.
Okay.
Uh, if not, then Deputy Director, a motion would be in order to adopt the consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers twenty-one dash two-thirty-three to resolution twenty-one dash two-ninety-four, excluding resolution twenty-one dash two-four-three to be voted upon separately.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Esco and Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Koppel?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tomaro?
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Armwood?
Yes.
And now, uh, Deputy Director, a motion would be appropriate to consider resolution twenty-one dash two-four-three, which was excluded by Commissioner Nara.
Can we have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Esco and Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Koppel?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Present but not voting.
County Commissioner Tomaro?
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Armwood?
Yes. Okay, before we go to the open public discussion, again, I'd just like to read the following. Uh, participants on this call will have the ability to speak during the public portion of this meeting. Before participants are able to unmute themselves, they must press star nine to virtually raise their hand. When your hand is raised, you will be placed in the queue or virtual line to speak during the public portion. The moderator will ask participants with raised hands to be unmuted. When this happens, the phone operator will instruct the participant to press star six to unmute themselves. You will know when you have been unmuted and it is time to speak when you hear the operator say you are unmuted. When a participant has either completed their comments within the five-minute time limitation or told their allocated five minutes are up, they will be placed on mute by the moderator. So to recap these updated instructions, you must press star nine to raise your hand, then press star six when the operator tells you to do so in order to speak during the public portion. Now moderator will, uh, the moderator will open the floor for public comments. Operator, is there anyone in the queue wishing to speak?
Deputy Director, there are. I'll start with the first.
Okay. Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, this is Diane Crawford, Perth Amboy, New Jersey. And I would just like to thank all involved for being chosen to be amongst those who are called extraordinary black union leaders. Um, it is a privilege and an honor to do so, so I thank you again.
Thank you for all of your service to the county.
You're most welcome.
Is there anyone else in the queue, Mr. Operator?
Yes, uh, Deputy Director, I'll, I'll allow the next individual.
Could you please state your name and address for the record, please? Hello, could you please state your name and address for the record? You might be on mute.
Uh, Jersey Watcher YouTube channel, broadcasting worldwide. Thanks for telling me I was on mute.
Oh, no problem, Mr. Macropolis.
Uh, can I start?
Certainly, Mr. Macropolis.
Okay, um, fake Republican political operative from Carteret, Freddie Almengor, donates to Cory Booker and Menendez. Freddie pretends to be a Republican to infiltrate their campaigns to destroy them from within, currently infiltrating Jack Chittorelli's campaign. His partner in crime, convicted felon and identity theft fraud artist Mohammed Crooked Mo Radwan. If you or anybody you know has been victimized by Mohammed Radwan, please call seven-three-two-five-four-one-four-one-eight-one. Ask for Captain Michael Dammun or call your local police department. He works on Governor McGreevy's payroll, paid to destroy Republicans and Democrats, along with his known associates, Nick Mikarsky, Freddie Almengor, Karen Deep Siddha, Councilman Joe Howe of Carteret's niece, Justin Maldonado, and the fake cop, Tony the Goofball Gallo. All political operatives paid to destroy Edison and Carteret for the MCDO and Kevin McCabe allegedly. Um, do we have the county prosecutor on the line right now, um, Deputy Director?
I don't believe she is on this call. I don't see her, uh, listed here.
It's okay. Um, I'll make my statement so that it's, uh, publicly on the record. There are rumors circulating around town that Mohammed Radwan paid the barber with drugs to write a fake police report on Mayor Ryman. Currently, there is an investigation ongoing. I demand the Middlesex County prosecutors to investigate the terrorist Crooked Mo Radwan. Why would Mohammed Radwan tell the barber it's in his best interest not to speak with Lieutenant Kelly? I feel if, uh, something bad happened to the barber like they claimed, uh, why can't he just go to the police department and say, hey, um, Mayor Ryman did this or that? Um, why would you have to hide what you're doing? I think the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office needs to look into if, uh, people are paying people around the county to write fake police reports on civilians and government officials. Currently, the same individual is going around Middlesex County, Edison Carteret, Perth Amboy, filing so many fake police reports on people, it's unbelievable. I don't even know how nobody locks him up. Freddie Almengor, uh, has recently been trying to get people in town and elsewhere to call in and bother Councilman Diaz of Carteret and even his wife, Superintendent Diaz, Carteret Board of Education. Allegedly, according to Mayor O'Kennedy Gattuso, Freddie Almengor is having an affair with Councilman Joe Howe's niece, Karen Deep Siddha. Um, if I still have time, do I still have time to say all the black heroes that influenced my lifetime keeper? How much time do I got?
Uh, Mr. Macropolis, please, go ahead.
Okay, I like, uh, Tupac Shakur, um, Malcolm X, uh, Haile Selassie. Uh, for those who don't know Haile Selassie, that was the Orthodox Christian Emperor of Ethiopia. Um, I like Sheriff Mildred Millie Scott for all the racism she had to put up with in the twenty-nineteen campaign. Um, because of those idiots from Carteret and Tony Goofball Gallo, that's not even a real Republican, should be ashamed of himself. Um, God bless Sheriff Mildred Millie Scott. I'm really happy she won that election, because she deserved to win that election. Um, how much ti, can you guys tell me how much time I have left, so I know, um,
Madam Clark?
To filibuster? How many seconds?
I believe she said thirty.
Twenty-five.
Okay, twenty-five? I want to say, God bless America, God bless all the freeholders up there and your families during COVID- nineteen. God bless everybody in Middlesex County. And I just want to say this, in America, we don't worship the government, we worship God. And if more people understood that and held our government accountable instead of just following orders, um,
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Macropolis. I'm not sure if Sheriff Scott has ever been mentioned in the same breath as Tupac Shakur, but I'm sure somewhere she is beaming with pride. Is there anyone else wishing to speak, Operator?
Uh, ye, yes, Deputy Director, uh, there is. I'll unmute the next, uh, participant now.
Thank you. Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, uh, Mr. Deputy Director Commissioner, this is Charles Cradaville from New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. Uh, I want to start by wishing you and everyone else on the line a very happy and healthy Black History Month. And, um, thank you for your words on that aspect. I, I would like to ask if someone could address the, uh, you know, abrupt closure of the warming center in New Brunswick, uh, that, uh, you know, meant to comply with the Code Blue legislation that was passed last year. I understand it was closed, uh, for the better part of a week. And, uh, I'm concerned about the county's compliance with that law. Could somebody address that?
Deputy Director, I'd ask that Megan, uh, speak on this matter?
Certainly.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Director, um, and Charlie, it's nice to meet you virtually. Um, unfortunately, that was an unfortunate, um, situation that happened in Brunswick and really did a more of a public health emergency. Um, but as you know, um, you know, the county calls Code Blue. Um, many municipalities do step up to open warming centers, so we did have other, uh, facilities available. But you have to remember, NJ two-one-one is our state homeless, um, hotline, and they also provide, um, information if someone needs to be sheltered, so, um, we're, we're, uh, I believe we had enough options open to the county residents.
And can you tell me, uh, what towns do, uh, you know, have a Code Blue on cold nights?
Um, Perth Amboy, always Perth Amboy, and most nights Highland Park and Monroe.
Okay, um, I'll move on to just say that, uh, it's a problem that the, uh, vendor that does recycling through the Improvement Authority has, uh, dropped the ball and missed pickups. I understand it's due to the weather, but if they're gonna miss pickups, they have to give a refund to the towns, because we're paying, uh, for not getting service. And I know, for instance, in the city of New Brunswick, uh, DPW workers are being overworked and asked to pick up the slack and pick up recycling when we were supposed to have a vendor do it for us and paid to have a vendor do it for us. So I'm gonna continue to push for a refund, and I hope that you'll join me in, um, doing the right thing and making it right. Um, I do finally want to talk about, uh, and ask you about the canceling of elections. I think it's atrocious, uh, that now Union County has joined Middlesex County in, uh, uh, you know, basically doubling the length of the terms of all the county committee members. And, you know, I talked about this at length, uh, at your prior meetings. Um, I, I know, I don't believe, uh, Mr. Armwood, that you're on the committee, uh, but I'd like to know your position. Do you support canceling the, the committee elections that are sched, that were scheduled for this summer uh, and, and not holding those for, for another two years? Uh, you know, a lot of people fought hard for our, our right to vote. Um, do, do you, do you oppose, uh, canceling those elections, or, or do you support that?
Um, Mr. Cradaville, I try not to bring politics into this meeting, and there's been several occasions where you've brought politics in regarding the Middlesex County Democratic Organization. So, I'm assuming that you were unaware of their contact information, so I have it for you for the record. Their number is seven-three-two-nine-zero-six-three-six-eight-zero. The chairman is Mr. McCabe. So if you have questions regarding the Middlesex County Democrat, or Democratic Organization, I would suggest that you contact them. Um, I also believe that Ms. Edes Delgado, um, is also a point person there who you can ask for and direct any political questions that you may have.
Okay, well, I did want to ask your colleagues, uh, their position on this, because I know they were on the committee, and this affects uh, a huge number of people. Every, every Democrat that's gonna be voting in the June primaries is gonna not have the choice uh, for this office because of this decision. So could Mr. Kenny, through the, through the chair, could you tell us your position on this? Did you vote for this change to the bylaws?
Uh, this is, this is Commissioner Kenny. Um, I'm just gonna, uh, repeat or echo, uh, what was just said by our Deputy Director Armwood. Charlie, so thank you.
Commissioner Nara?
Uh, Commissioner Nara, would you like to?
I, I apologize, I was having trouble unmuting. Um, Charlie, uh, I also am gonna say this, I, I, I really feel like these meetings are about our work as commissioners, and so, um, I'm not gonna engage in discussing politics during these meetings. And, um, so that is my statement right now.
Okay, Commissioner Tomaro?
Time's up.
Okay, unfortunately, your time is up, Mr. Cradaville. Uh, Operator, is there anyone else in the queue wishing to speak?
Not at this time, Deputy Director.
Okay, can I get a motion to close the public portion?
I'll move.
Second?
Second, second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ladies and gentlemen, please have a happy Black History Month and have a good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, please have a happy Black History Month and have a good evening.
Thank you, Deputy Director.
Thank you, you as well.
Thank you.